And the levy limitations that are imposed on counties as far as property tax increases from year to year. We discussed the road and bridge levy option that is available to counties and also opt out levies that are available to counties to supplement property tax revenue. In addition, she provided us the audited financial statements, so we were able to see the performance of the county over the last several years. And she shared with us the budgets from 2020 and 2021. In addition, we visited with her at some length about the budget process here at Lincoln County. And we discussed strategies used in other counties, municipalities, school districts, and in private industry, just to kind of compare approaches in all of those entities. Finally, we talked about interim financial reporting and what the process is here in Lincoln County to communicate to you throughout the budget year how you are meeting your budget goals and what your actual performance has been. So based on our review of all of that data, we've compiled a summary of some key factors that Keith is going to present to you next.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. My name's Keith Severson, 5205 South Sawgrass in Lincoln County. I've had the pleasure of living in Lincoln County for about 30 years, and so I have seen our county grow and experienced that over time. As we all know, growth does not happen overnight, and it really occurs just over time. And as we look at the numbers, and I'm not going to take you necessarily to all those numbers, but we're going to stay big picture. We're going to stay really big picture, and I was asked to really focus on two things. One, we wanted to look at the last eight years. Where have we been? Where are we? And where are we going? And it relates to that, we all have financial statements that give us a history of what has happened. And so the first slide is really a snapshot of the balance sheet of the county over the last eight years. And all the information that I gathered and looked at is all on your website. This is all information. You've seen it. It's posted, generally available to all of our taxpayers, and really going through the numbers. But when I looked at it from 14 to current 2020 and 2021, the last audit report was actually issued in January of '22 for fiscal year ending or calendar year ending '20. But all of the numbers are really consistent, and information's provided very technically accurate, and so the information you're getting is very accurate. It's just what are you using it for? And where does it take you to that next step? And the two numbers that kind of stood out for us was really, starting in 2014, we had an unassigned fund balance. And what is the unassigned fund balance? That's the cookie jar. That's the available funds, because everything above that line really relates to restricted fund balances and assigned fund balances. Basically, it's spoken for money. And so the more you have in that unassigned really provides the flexibility for the growth of the county. So at 123114, we had 11.5 million in the bank with about $5 million additional investments and unassigned fund balance of 5.3 million. Total expenses back in 2015 or '14 were about $15 million. So our unassigned cookie jar was about 34%. A healthy, that's 34% of our budget, was still in reserved or unassigned fund balance, and that's a pretty good standing. We move forward to 12312020. That's the second column from the left. It shows a cash in bank of about 11.8 million and about 2 million in investments, leaving us with an unassigned fund balance of 4.3 million at 4,331. What that 4.3 million included in that particular year was also the receipt by the county of about 3.5 million of CARES Act funds, one-time money that really came due to COVID. And that funds really supplemented the assigned fund balance as of 12312020. And if you just look at the trend from 2014 to 2015, 5.3, 4.2, 4.8, and I've got a slide here, there we go, I'm sorry. You can see here by the chart that in '14, it was a little over 5 million, then it went down to a little over 4, and then it grew a little bit till '17, and then '18 and '19 it continued to decline. The observation is, what would have happened? What would that number have looked like in 2020 without the CARES Act funds? You then move to 123121. The county had 13.7 million in the bank, which included approximately 5.5 million of additional ARPA funds that were restricted but were included in your cash. So it kind of makes you feel good that we've got cash in the bank, but remember, those funds are still restricted. And a similar amount of that, I believe the ARPA funds, is considered to be coming in this year as well, so that'll continue to supplement the budget. And then there was an unassigned balance at an all-time high of 6.1 at 123121. So from the standpoint that I really should have started with the end, first, you're in a pretty good standing position as it relates to the balance sheet as of 123121. The question is, where do we go from here? And what would have happened had we not had the supplemental funding that provided stability to the balance sheet at 1231? Which leads to the question and one of the further recommendations of strategic planning and budgeting for the next two, three to five years. Because if life would have continued with COVID, the question would raise, would that trend of unassigned fund balance continue to have declined had it not had supplemental funding that came in the form of one-time funding in 2020 and 2022? So we do try to look at that in really a focus of the importance of futuristic looking and trying to take a look at these fund balances of where we're going next time. The next sheet really was just an observation, and the other comment I wanted to quickly talk about was just the average transfers out of the general fund into other departments. As you can see on that, the average transfer for all funds for the eight years averaged about $3.3 million. Of that, about 2.5 million goes to road and bridge, and the other 800 goes to other governmental funding. It's interesting from a budget analysis, as you look over the last eight years, the general fund has averaged an under-budget of approximately $2.2 million. That means we budget to spend X, but we actually come in under that number. Road and Bridge, very similar results. Their average under-budget, which is typically a good thing, was $2.1 million or $2,810,000. That just raises questions as it relates to the reliability of future budgets and having adequate funding to meet the existing goals. I'll repeat that. Does it have the adequate funding to meet those existing goals? And you, as commissioners, have done a tremendous job in managing conservatively and dealing with the challenges at hand, and that you've been able to evaluate what are the needs of the county, but whether or not, if you have a budget that are consistently 2 million under, what services or what other benefits to the county are we not meeting? And so the balance of that with the actual funding available and creating the budget to available funds in the future really is the challenge of strategic planning and cash flow budgeting to make sure that that unassigned fund balance stays at a level of growth. The other observation we just wanted to point out, lastly, is the bottom. Currently, as of 123121, really outstanding debt of the county was $10 million. And the availability, not recommending, but the availability of the maximum debt is 5% of assessed value or up to $378 million. So there's quite a capacity there, and as you look at future capital expenditures, instead of spending cash, is borrowing some of those, the possibility of borrowing some of those funds and leveraging those costs over future years. And so from our standpoint, the county, from a financial standpoint right now, is in very strong position to really plan for the future. So I want to share that. I thank you for the opportunity, and I think then we'll continue to move on into our recommendations.
Commissioner Jim Holbeck. I live at 25515 Helen Trail up in Minnehaha County. I did live here in Lincoln County for 12 years, and still I'm an lion donor in Lincoln County. I've been in front of this commission before in my former job as being a superintendent in Harrisburg. And the last time I talked here, right before I talked, you debated whether or not to have a large animal confinement. So I don't know if there's a correlation that I'm always following how you guys deal with a lot of manure. I'm starting to get a complex here a little bit. And we'll see if there's any relationship between my report and what you had earlier We're not here to tell you, you're doing your job wrong by far. That's not our job. Our job is just to take a lot of people, and you heard from Bill, it was a great group, a wonderful group to hear. I learned so much from these other people. They had a lot of great ideas, and I think it's worthwhile to hear the things that we came up with. And you can imagine, we met many times, came up with various discussions of what we would bring forth to you, and we consolidated those decisions. Oops. Let me make sure I do this right. There we go. Into these actions. So our near-term actions that we're putting in front of you are these. Five-year budget with cash flow based on common planning assumptions. Now, I was listening in earlier on your discussion, and there was a comment that we need strategic planning. Folks, you need strategic planning. You need to look out and beyond today. Growth is something that I had a little bit of experience in, in Harrisburg School, and I found this. You can look at growth two different ways. It's a challenge, or it's an opportunity. And if you want to fight growth, you're going to be fighting something that you're not going to win. You have to embrace growth, and growth is here, and you have to see what are the good things that you can get from that. In order to plan for that, you need to have some strategic planning that will tell you what are these cash flow issues you have to deal with, and when are they going to hit you? Now, my job today, I'm not retired, I'm retreaded. I go out and I do consulting for school boards. And when I talk to them about five-year strategic plans or budgets, I tell them this. You write them, and they're good for a year. Then you rewrite them the next year for five years. Things change. You need to do the same. You need to prepare and provide concise monthly financial reports at the department level so that you understand exactly where everybody's sitting and that you scour those monthly reports. That's your department heads, just like I always used to talk to in our school, I'd pull out my checkbook and I'd say, folks, this thing has a limited amount of dollars in it. These are the dollars we have at hand, no more. This is what we have to stay within. And your department heads have to be on top of that at all times, but you need to see where they're at. We gave some suggestions to Sherri that one of the things that would help this is maybe a different financial sheet that would show you this. This is what's budgeted at this month. This is how much we've spent. It's this percent. Now, let me stop right there, and I'll tell you that those three figures meant a lot to me at a school that spent 40 million in a general fund. I would look at that and I'd say, why is this one so high? Or why is this one so low? It created the questions for me to keep on top of the finances. Then don't stop there. The next column is, what was last year's expenditure so you can see the comparison? Sometimes there's a very good answer. You put some new program in, and of course, it's going to cost more. Or last year, you paid for something that this year you don't have to. But to look at each month where you're sitting budget-wise, but also compared to last year is very good. Now, Keith told you a couple of things that are a little alarming to us. At the end of your budget year, you're sitting with 2 million left that you didn't spend in the general fund and 2 million left that you didn't spend in the highway fund. Now, you can look at that two ways. If you're in a business, you'd say, we're good conservatives, we're not spending the money, we're holding on to it. My belief is, then you don't budget that money. If you're not planning to spend it, don't budget it. The old boys, the old boy when I first started was Court Carnes. He was a superintendent in Beersford for many years, and he'd say, guys, you write your budgets like this. You underestimate your revenues by 5%. You overestimate your expenses by 5%, so you got some good cushion. Well, what that did was it put 10% more money into the coffers each year. That's wrong. That day has passed. We wrote our budgets at 1% padding on each side of the ledger. That's only a 2% variation. To do that, you've got to be very accurate to know how much you need in those departments and hold true to that. Otherwise, you're writing a budget that is not accurate. It's not a good thing then to say, oh, look, we saved $2 million. You shouldn't have budgeted it if you weren't planning on spending it. Budget 2 million less then. Budget it accurately and make sure it gets done. Establish a reserve fund. Keith talked about the concern, and those charts are a little deceiving, and he showed you that. Throw out COVID money. Where are you heading? You're heading down a bad path for reserves. Your reserves are going down. Without the COVID money, that was a life vest for all of us in government, those funds, when they're gone, and they're one-time monies, when they're gone, that isn't there, and the trend needs to change. You need to decide what is going to be your reserve fund target you want to stay at that safely gets you there. Now, your business isn't much different than a school business. The school's business depended on property taxes, just like you. When are your two worst months for funds? April and October. Why? Because people pay their taxes in May and November. So pay attention to your April and October cash flows and balances to see what kind of dollars you need to make it to those months before your new revenues come in is very There's no doubt, one of the toughest things you deal with is taking care of the mammoth amount of roads, bridges, culverts in your district. Those needs are very evident in the north part of the county. Those needs are very evident in the south part of the county. I said that on purpose, because sometimes I think we've created this divide, do they need it up there? Do they need it down there? They both need it. And you can't say, here's where the dollars come from, so we're only going to spend it there. The people live mostly in the north. There's still roads in the south, and the people paying the taxes in the north help to provide for the roads in the south. Those roads that are needed, you underspent your budget by $2 million last year. What does it take to identify what is needed, make an accurate budget on that, and spend those dollars accurately as to what's needed? You need to make sure that this part of your expenditure is self-sufficient. If you are finding that in this county, that your fund balances are going down, we think this is an area for you to explore to help self-fund bridges, culverts, and roads if you're going to be assessing anything additionally in taxes. You can opt out in a county, but you can also do a road fund. And you need to take care of your roads, bridges, and culverts, if that's an area. That should allow you then, if they're self-sufficient, to then focus and put your attention on the other things that you're going to need with growth in this district. It's not going to be 65,000 people next year in this county. You're going to have to take care of those other costs, and you've had conversations on what are those type of other costs, such as other facilities and infrastructure funding. Examine those other projects, and what is the most cost-effective way of bonding for You get your money mainly from taxes, from property taxes. There was a bill that was out in the legislature to try to see if some sales tax could come to the counties. I'm old enough to remember that when somebody asked for a five-cent-a-drink tax to help counties take care of all the alcohol problems they have to deal with, that our state said absolutely no more tax. They wouldn't even put a five-cent tax on a drink, which most people in a bar never even know how much that drink costs. That is something maybe that you can explore in the future with trying to convince the legislature and others that there is another funding source there for you. But if property tax is your area, and you need to take care of these things, such as, and that's your debate, that's your decision, on how to take care of the facilities for jails, how to take care of your facilities for offices, if you need to have another facility in the north part of the district, all of those questions that you guys have been throwing around certainly come back to a strategic plan and then identifying how you would pay for those. Going back, I think if you take care of your roads, bridges, and culverts and make that self-sufficient, you will have the abilities to end up covering those expenses that you have. I'm not here to tell you, go out and just borrow money willy-nilly, but you are paying down your expenses. You are paying down your debt to the tune of only 10 million left. At one time in 1970, you had the population of what Roberts County has today. That model that you used, you're still using for a county that someday is going to be bigger, trust me, than Pennington County. You're going to be number two someday. And that model that you're using, you need to rethink, we believe, to stay up with this massive growth that's going to continue there. You have some debt. I understand debt. We had to build schools because kids were there, and you had to borrow. In order to do that without raising taxes, people always said, how can you build a school without raising taxes? We built it on increased valuations that came into the district. So as we had payments due, you structure those. We sat here one time when you had a bond agent tell you about structuring payments. You can structure your payments with existing debt, which will go away pretty soon, that 10 million, with other monthly, or excuse me, yearly or annual payments that you make. You can structure those so it's like this. Let me tell you about taxpayers. They hate this, they love this, but they forget about this when you go back up. It's best to try to keep things where people can predict that their taxes are going to stay pretty level. You have the ability to do that with additional valuations that's taken place. So I got to talk about some of the easy things. Nathan Vander Plaats, who is the city manager for Lennox, is going to cover an area that I'm going to tell you got the most conversation from us. And we really feel strongly that this is something, I know you've looked at it in the past, but this is something that you should consider in the future, and that is that now the model that you might need to look at for a county that's got 65,000-plus and someday will be twice as many people, that you may need to look at a county administrator job. So Nathan will take that on. Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. Nate Vander Plaats, 804 South Main Street in Lennox. As you mentioned, I'm the city administrator in Lennox. On the group, I'm probably the newcomer to Lincoln County. I've only been here three years, but I have watched with a lot of excitement from afar what's happened in Lincoln County in the last decade or so. And I'm here today to talk more operationally internally for your organization, what kinds of things can you do? This topic came up early and often in our meetings. With the growth that you've experienced, not just in the county, but in the courthouse, in your actual operations, you need a single responsible person for managing and coordinating the affairs of the county. Right now, that's delegated to department heads by the commission. But when you get to an organization of this size, you become a fairly complex organization. There's a lot of moving parts. Even financially, there are a lot of moving parts. Managing debt, planning debt, planning capital expenditures, capital improvement plans, five-year highway plans. All those things need to be coordinated to actually become policy and to come to fruition. Our concern is, without having a single executive in charge of that, is that many of those things won't come to fruition. You won't have the capacity to do that. And when you become a complex organization, there are a number of things that can challenge an organization. You get silent communications and operations. The right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing or even talking about. There's a lack of accountability for performance and results. If I were to go to the Lincoln County website today, would I find key performance indicators for every department? I don't think I would. I think it's a discussion that probably is had, but it's never something identified in metric form and measured and reported on. You tend to see a lack of long-term capital and asset planning in organizations without this kind of role. And overall, you tend to see more inefficient operations. These kinds of positions are responsible for finding efficiencies. And I think in our group, Jim had actually mentioned at one point, any administrator that can't find in a $14 million budget enough savings to justify their salary isn't necessarily worth their salt. There are efficiencies that come along with hiring these types of positions. So in order to move that direction, I want to talk a little bit about what this is and isn't. It isn't something that replaces the commission or their responsibilities for governance and setting policy. It doesn't take away any of the authority of the commission. It takes direction from the commission. What it does do is it allows the commission to delegate the operational responsibilities to a single person, and that person then carries out the affairs of the county government. The administrator would work with the commission to develop sound approaches to challenges and opportunities, and that's typically what you look for in policy formation. So when you're talking about, as an example, this morning's discussion on Feedlot, what kinds of policies need to be developed in this 45-day period, and how do you go about accomplishing those things? Probably more important than anything else, it helps the commission develop a long-term vision for the county, and that comes into account when you're talking about strategic planning, capital planning, those kinds of things. And last but not least, it aligns the values, the vision and the mission of the commission with each department. Each department is then focused on that long-term vision, focused on those values and the mission statement of the organization. The position reports only to the commission, and I think that's a fairly important thing to make clear. These are positions that are accountable to the governing board, no different than if you have a CEO of a corporation that reports to a board or a nonprofit executive director that reports to a board. A position of a county administrator, city administrator, any of those things, reports to the commission and the commission only, and that is who they are accountable to. The commission is still accountable to the public for setting direction and for setting policy and taking on those general governance roles that are expected. Typically, a county administrator is going to have experience in policy formation or administration at state, federal, or local levels. Some of them have all three. Typically, will hold a master's degree in public administration. We've got a great school here in South Dakota that's churning out these students at a regular pace. And often, they begin their careers in the policy field, whether it's budgeting or planning, sometimes zoning. Those are the kinds of roles that you're talking about. These are folks that have spent their time and their careers and their education in public governance and in public administration and have the background education and experience necessary to efficiently manage the affairs of local government. Next, let's introduce Mark Nordsee. Mark's going to summarize and conclude for us.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Mark Nordsee. I live at seventy-nine hundred South Pinewood in Lincoln County. Very proud to be a Lincoln County resident. The Financial Action Network began our work in November at the request of County Auditor Sherry Lund. With the charter and outline that you had an opportunity to review, we, as the Fan Committee, did not come into this process with any preconceived notions, predetermined outcomes, or any one attempting to influence what we were going to report on. So we were on our own to come to our own conclusions and develop our own recommendations. Our goal was very simple. What recommendations could we make that would improve the governance, financial, and planning processes of Lincoln County? We would like to thank Sherry, Francie, Toby Brown, and the commissioners who took the time to meet with us, answer our questions, provide information and data, and most importantly, their insights into the future of Lincoln County. As commissioners, you will recall, we ask each of you three very simple questions. What is working? What isn't working? And what would you do to address the things that aren't working? We appreciated your time and your candor because those answers really helped us focus on things that were important and for us to discuss with you today. We came to this project with an independent lens and an unbiased eyes. Factual data provided the foundation of the presentation and the report. And you please use those together. The presentation is the very high-level summary. The written report has a lot more detail into it, so I encourage you to look at both. And was the consensus that our group met. And it was a consensus. We had a lot of discussion, but we came to a consensus. And I heard it early this morning, one of the commissioners said, we need more consensus. Well, absolutely, we do. We felt the same way. And that's why we made the recommendations that we did to really help move Lincoln County forward. Our findings and recommendations are opportunities and are not intended for any other purpose than to improve Lincoln County. This isn't our assessment of anybody's performance, your performance, or anybody else's. This is to move Lincoln County forward. We have opportunities and we should use those opportunities. So what is next? For that answer, we actually look to you. We have given you the proverbial drink-from-a-fire hose during our presentation today. You've gotten a report, you've gotten a presentation, we've thrown lots of numbers at you and lots of opportunities. But you get the opportunity to tell us what to do and where to go next. The members of the Financial Action Network stand ready to take each recommendation into the implementation phase, if that's what you intend us to do. It is your choice. And we could continue to work on implementing the recommendations of the Fan Report over time. None of these things are flip a switch. This is going to take some time. We realize it, and I think you should too. Develop a tightly-integrated planning process. We can help you with that. We can provide input on what good, concise financial reporting looks like so it's helpful when you get it and you can make meaningful decisions. We can help develop a tight county manager, administrator job description because we think, as we said, that position we think is important, but a tight job description will help it become effective, which we see goes hand in hand. We're also prepared to work with the Justice Center Task Force on any financing options should they get ready to make a decision and want some financial insights. We have the capability to do that. We are willing to offer those assistance. Plus, anything else that you see in the report or anything else that comes to mind after you read our report. I will close with a paraphrase quote that Commissioner Jim Schmidt offered at the February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two Joint Sioux Falls-Lincoln County Planning Meeting prior to voting on a developer's request. I don't do this to embarrass you. This is a good quote. And also realizing that we are volunteers and we were not appointed, so here it goes. Two bodies, meaning the planning commissions of Sioux Falls and Lincoln County, of private citizens vetted this and heard testimony and in a collective way received unanimous approval to turn down this request. So I look to these individuals because they were appointed. We were volunteers, they were appointed. We asked them to do this heavy lifting and to do this work, and I honor their work. So as a representative of Fan, I hope you feel the same way of our work as we honor the citizens of Lincoln County and the taxpayers with it. So thank you very much, and now we'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions right now that they'd like to ask? I'm sure Sherry can get us contact information as well.
Madam Chair.
Yep, go ahead.
I would like to thank all of you for your time, your energy, and your enthusiasm. I'm sitting here thinking, if we were to have hired this out to some private company, what cost would have been connected with that? And when you, all of you are here today, look at the credentials that these individuals represented from all walks of life and from various responsibilities. I can only thank you because you have given us, I think, the tools of which to move forward. And it was interesting, I was writing down all of the things which you aren't finished with yet. And since you have volunteered with that, that makes it that much easier. But I think that there are many things on this report that we have to digest, look at, and our challenge is how well we're going to implement that. And there are several things on here that, you know, we have looked at in the past, but we probably haven't really had the ability to move forward. I know Commissioner Poppins is smiling because he's been a long advocate for a county administrator. But on the other hand, when we face some of these things, we get criticized because of the cost. But I think that being a budget process is a very, very complicated situation, and you have provided, you know, information that we necessarily wouldn't get. But also, I'd like to thank our auditor because it was her emphasis and her leadership that brought this thing together. So my hats are off to you, Sherry. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Go ahead.
I think it shows that you pay for leadership. And money that you spend on leadership is, generally speaking, well-spent when you look at what it can save you and what it can bring to you and open your eyes to different things. So that's my only comment.
Thank you. I too would like to thank the auditor. I know this kind of came to our attention. Minnehaha County had done it and gave a presentation that I thought was very interesting. And I spoke to Sherry about it and she took the reins and got it done. And so I appreciate everybody that had input into that process and look forward to talking to you some more in the future. Thank you. All right. We are going to move on to item four on our agenda.
I'm wearing a different hat for this, everybody, so. Dave Gillespie, eleven twenty-five East Elder. I'm here on the Lincoln County Veterans Memorial Fund, which is at the Farmer State Bank here in Canton. And if we could move this open, Carter, so I can lay some things on here. We have several veterans here on both sides of the aisle today. And I want to acknowledge them. And I would like to say, I sure encourage them to speak if they would like. I realize the day is getting long, but I'll start in with this. The memorial that's right behind us here was built in around nineteen ninety-five. And it's starting to, you know, reach the tenth, eleventh hour. So I'm going to go through these pictures kind of quickly. This is from the west looking east. This is kind of right in the front behind you. This is looking to the north. I'm going to walk through these quickly, so. We've got another picture here looking from the east to the west. Jack Fox Park in the background. And here is the problem that we're starting to see. The water is pooling out there, has done for many years. But some of the bricks are losing their faces. They're popping off. Ones that are looking out there can probably see that. Here's another picture. Some of these bricks have veterans' names on them. These, I don't think do, but they are out there in that corridor, so. This is the picture of the front of the courthouse, as you know. You know, we're thinking here today, we would like, if we can raise funding, we have under two thousand dollars in the bank, but long ways to go. But if we could raise the funding, could we ever move it to the front of the courthouse on the south side? That's up in the air, but that's what I want to present. Here's a picture looking from the east, kind of at an angle. And the addition has been taken off, of course, as you, most of you know. This is another picture, looking from the west at an angle. Jim, I didn't forget about you. I think I got this from Susan Irons. I think you brought this in, maybe? Is that correct?
That's correct.
She gave that to me. This is just an idea. Craig Ditburner, who's in the audience here, took a picture of another memorial up in Minnesota. These are just ideas. John Rumbow, our building superintendent, had an engineer draw these or I don't know if he done a CAD system or what, but that's that view, more of a kind of a silhouette. This is another angle of that. And I had a veteran come to me yesterday. And I'm one of four people that oversee that account down at the bank. And Kip Crawford, myself, Rick Williamson, and Susan Irons oversees that, so. Here's a picture from one out in Custer County, Custer, South Dakota. This is another picture of that, just an idea. They built kind of a wing over it with names on it to protect it from the elements. This is another picture of that. Just ideas. And then this is also involved in that, so. And at this time, I would like to, I'll take a seat and entertain anybody that wants to come up. I realize it's been a long morning for all of you. So anybody else who would like to come up? We're kind of looking for the blessing of the commission to possibly move it to the front. Jim, I think you're an ally of that. But there's also ideas from John Rumbow that... Which one? Okay.
Dave, Commissioner Poppins has a question for you.
Yes.
As you well know, I think there's never been an issue with getting the commission to agree to getting it moved or wishing to have it moved. Unfortunately, it's come back and forth whether or not the veterans, who this is to honor, wish for it to be moved. Is there a consensus now that that decision has been made, they would like it to be moved? And I don't know if you can answer or who could answer that. I think that's what all we've ever, as long as you sat on here with, and I sat with you, and I don't want to take the thunder from Commissioner Schmidt. He has worked diligently to try to get this done. And we've just waited for, I guess, an opinion from those that it honors, that that's what their wishes were, so.
I don't know if we have a hundred percent, Mike, but I think we've got more than we did when the courthouse was built.
Very good.
I will say that, or the addition here, so.
Sure.
You want any others, Paul?
Thank you.
Those of you that have been in the military know about the cardinal rule of being careful what you volunteer for. Well, I broke that cardinal rule day before yesterday, so here I am. We'll see how this goes. I put some thoughts together, jotted them down. I'd like to share them with you. The concept of moving the memorials to the front part, I think, has a lot of value, extreme amount of value. If we would not only work with the memorials that are located there, but also establish new memorials and name this a memorial park for Lincoln County and build on it. It would provide the county with an opportunity to share its history with travelers and residents. And personally, I think we need this reminder every day to look at those memorials and say, hey, you know, what happened in the past could be part of the future if we're not careful, if we don't protect our freedoms. Third, as I talked to Harold, we've got people out in the community that have passed or that are still there that have diligently spent their time and effort in working with various services within Lincoln County. And Harold had a friend fifty-five years that started the nine-one-one system or enabled the nine-one-one system. Something should be done in that memorial park to honor these people that have contributed over the years to Lincoln County. Now, we talk about the problems with the pavers being deteriorating. That's another reason to move them. Now, Commissioner Poppins, I don't know if we've got a hundred percent backing of this or not, but I think it behooves us, common sense behooves us, to get that stuff moved or we're going to lose it all. If we do establish a park, which I hope you folks will enable that to happen, if it's done right, it will be a class act. It really will. It'll be a feather in the cap for Lincoln County. It'll become a point of interest. It'll become a point of interest. It'll be a place that people will want to come and look. We've got other areas in Lincoln County that people enjoy going to, that you've established. So let's work with this park. Another individual that comes to mind that I think should also be, have his name and his record of service, is Ken Elbers. Longtime Lincoln County sheriff. Why don't we put up some walls? We've got numerous Purple Heart recipients in Lincoln County. We could honor those. We've got numerous people that have dedicated their lives, their talents, their monies to the betterment of Lincoln County. I think we all know Helen Rowe. How about our county residents who have farmsteads that are over 100 years under ownership of one family? Why not honor those, put those up on a wall too? For, you know, preservation. How about the individuals that were killed in action? I don't see any place where those names are listed, do you? For the public to look at and see? Killed in action. How about a wall? How many of you have seen the wall for the Vietnam War? That is an inspiration, yes. That is an inspiration. It also is very humbling. I spent 22 years in the military. I have two sons, one spent 20 years, one spent six. I have a grandfather, an uncle. I have two brothers that spent time in the military. It's important to me to see that preserved, protected. But not only that, to have these residents, these people that I've mentioned, honored also. And I think if we have a memorial park right out here in front, we would behoove the county to do it. Appreciate the time, folks.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Got my mic shut up. In light of the fact that we're potentially looking at a new courthouse, is there any consideration that that might be a location as well, depending on what, if that facility is completed in the future? I'm just asking the question.
It's a consideration, yes, but you know, how many people realize that we have back here memorials to the Air Force, the Navy, the Marines, the Army, the Coast Guard? How many people even know they're back there? If the new facility will accommodate public viewing appropriately so that they can see it without having to...
And that's what I asked for, that the new site would potentially be larger, or maybe larger enough to allow a more appropriate display. Unfortunately, this site is very limited. There's conversations of not being able to place it right in the middle because they may have needed to protect space for growth. There may be, and moving it to the corner. Same token may be that if the new site is selected and proceeds, that would possibly free up this area. So I think there's some discussion that could, but I, you know, I can't speak for the whole board. But Paul, you've known this board and the other boards. This board has vote, you know, continuously wanted to support the veterans and are ready to participate. I think they were looking for, maybe not 100%, but a majority consensus that it was time to do so. And your point about the bricks and that has been brought up is very clear that that time is near, so.
Last but not least, can, I know it can, but will you agree to put this park as a line item in the budget? For building it and maintaining it? So that we know it'll be preserved for our futures and our kids' futures.
Paul, I think those are issues that are very worthy of discussion. I don't think any of us are prepared today to do that. But I get the ask. I think we'll have to talk to legal counsel and our auditor to see if that is something that we can look at doing.
I know of no one that can tell you how much it's going to cost to move from point A to point B or establish a park.
Sure.
But it would be nice to know if the financing is available so that we could pursue getting those professional people lined up to give us ideas and what the cost factor is going to be. And I'd really appreciate an agenda item in the near future so that we can discuss how to finance that. I know comments of donating, like, we could have donations. There's a lot of places that want donations. The reason I brought up different areas, excuse me, different people. It encompasses not just the military, it encompasses people that reside as neighbors or live on farms or provide first responders. It encompasses all of Lincoln County, basically. So why not support those people?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've been going all morning, it's 12:04. We're going to take a break. Commissioners, how long a break do you want to take?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
We always say five minutes and it's always 10. It's always 10, so I'm just going to say 10. So we'll be back at 12:15.
On our agenda.
Commissioner Gibbon, I see you, I think we've got a quorum if we get you up here at least to get going.
We skip one? Did we skip one?
Did I skip one? I did skip one. I am skipping one for a reason.
Okay.
Sorry, are we ready? I'm sorry, I thought you wanted to wait for somebody, okay.
Go.
What I'm here for is approval to purchase two truck chassis for my state up in Sioux Falls. It's off of the South Dakota DOT bid. The price on him is one hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars each. So we have, you know, as part of the attachment, I have two purchase agreements because each purchase agreement is for one, one unit. I guess one clarification I do want to made and I, and I had it in the, as part of the packet is delivery on these is set for probably November, December of this year. Which means I'll have to have budget, this upcoming budget to purchase the equipment for it in twenty-three, so.
Was it, I mean, it was, it's in your budget for this year, correct?
Yes, so the trucks and equipment are in my budget for this year. So typically we go with the Mack trucks, but I can't order them, I can't even order them, I can't even get in a slot for twenty-three to place an order for them. So the Freightliners, so we started going down this, chasing this one. We found out we could finally order them. Again, Freightliner had to go into negotiations with the South Dakota DOT to renegotiate their, their state bid contract. Of course, the price increased along with everything else. But we did research out trying to, if we could have got trucks August or something to get equipment on them. And my equipment has, went up by forty percent just for the equipment for those. So I would not have budget in this year's budget to even buy the equipment for them anyway.
So is the bid, I mean, is there a chance the bid price is going to change next year before you would have them?
Before I have the trucks?
Yeah.
No, if we sign this, if we sign the purchase agreement, that, that price should be locked in.
Okay.
Now, the equipment, the equipment, I'm not sure what the prices are going to be, you know, again, once we have a, a firm delivery date on them, then we would start researching out what, what equipment costs are going to be, so.
Okay. All right, I've heard the request, any questions?
I do, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
As you've just heard from our fan committee report, they like us to look at our budgets a little bit differently in the highway budget was brought up. In light of the fact that you're already aware that some of the equipment that you'd hope to have into your budget won't arrive and we won't be able to pay for it. Is there anything that would be prudent to look at changing that could still get done this year with funding out of your budget? I know that's a difficult thing because you've got bidding laws and all that kind of stuff to get stuff done. But I know more striping, more surfacing, any of that kind of stuff.
Anything as far as projects on roadways, it's going to have to be engineered. And, and they're already telling me, you know, I want, I want projects for next year to be engineered and they're already telling me if you're going to be a go on this, we need to know now. So we can start because they're so backed up with projects as well. So, you know, I, I guess, you know, I, I heard what the, what the fan committee had came up with and, and I understand that there's a lot of funds that, that are not spent, that are budgeted funds. Again, a lot of that is projects that either one, didn't happen, or two, it's expenses that, you know, when I budget for a project, I'm, I'm, I'm doing a five percent increase on costs on that. You know, and we're well under it. You know, so I guess, in, in a roundabout way to answer your question, yeah, there's some things we can look at. You know, but my fear of dropping down my costs to initial, actual costs, I'm basing my projections for the following year on those costs. Is if I have twenty miles of road that I'm going to do whatever to it. And if I go with near actual cost for twenty, twenty-two, and we get to twenty, twenty-three, and that's, you know, a third higher, then I'm only doing twelve miles of it. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Absolutely, there, there, some of the things, I know we talked about are the roads down on the, by the ethanol plant that are in dire need of, I didn't know if we could accelerate the engineering or accelerate any of those types of projects. A little bit quicker because of that, but as you said, engineering's even for next year is hard to get them scheduled, so, but I had to ask, so.
Yeah. And, and again, you know, we're still working on the ethanol plant road, County Road one forty-three, as far as some engineering to get some more solid numbers. Which is very difficult to do with, with the rising costs of everything, you know. I mean, I mean, it's a great thing that the feds are throwing out all this, this federal money, you know, for projects. But, but that also just overwhelms the contractors that you have. And they've got so much work to do and, and, you know, couple that with the, the, the lack of being able to hire staff to do that work for those contractors. Everything gets, it's costing more and more, so.
All right.
With that, I would move to authorize the approval of the two purchase, the two trucks from the I State DOT bid.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
All right, the next item I have is authorizing, for approval, authorize the chair to execute a joint power agreement with Pleasant Township. Again, this is for a bridge structure on two hundred, or four hundred and seventy-fifth Avenue. Structure number four-two dash one-one-zero dash two-five-three. So this was the highly contentious structure last year that the pipeline going down south had kept crossing, we eventually closed this bridge. Now, I'm, I'm, I just want to preface this by saying that just because it's closed is not why it's moving up in our project list. This has always been on the list, so probably a year and a half ago I had approached the township about doing a cost share with this. So basically, we're going to go into a cost share with Pleasant Township, they've, they've signed the agreement. They're going to do twenty percent cost share up to fifty thousand dollars for whatever the project. I'm anticipating, I'm hoping we can do like a pipe project similar to what we did in twenty-one in Dayton Township. So the cost would, you know, we're going to be by two hundred and ten thousand total overall cost or something like that. But again, this is one of those items that if we want, if I want to get it into next year's budget, you know, this is something that I need to let the engineers know so they can begin the process on this. But, so again, it's just an agreement with them to, to do a cost share on that structure.
All right, I've heard the request, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Thank you. I'll give the second to Commissioner Schmidt. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
All right, next item I have is approval and authorize the chair to execute a contract with Asphalt Surface Technologies Corporation, or Aztec, for the twenty-two micro-surface project. Again, we had awarded this bid here several weeks ago, a month ago. Again, total, total cost of the contract price is nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and forty-nine cents to cover seventeen miles of County Road one oh five and covering three miles of County Road one twenty-two.
Heard the request, is there a motion? Got a motion by Poppins?
Second.
Motion second by Gibbon. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
Next item I have is we're looking for, to go to bid for crushed gravel this year, so basically I'm looking for authorization to request bids for crushed gravel.
So moved.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. We're going to circle back, circle back, John Rambo, you want to come up? You've got item four eleven. And I thought there was another one, yeah, ten, four, ten and eleven.
So item number four, I'm going to hand over to Chad Hazel, he's with the foundation, so, uh, I'll let him speak on that.
I won't take much of your time, you guys are very, very busy today. I just wanted to let you know some of the good news that's happening out at the fairgrounds. The beginning of March, we entered into a contract with Cleary to put up the show ring. We wrote them the first initial check on the building. We have to pay some more when the building is delivered and then, of course, once it's. Show ring this year, we're going to plan on having all of the, the events that happened at the fairground that used to take place out there under the tent will happen inside the show ring this year, along with all the livestock shows. And we're pretty excited about that. Hopefully, the plan is, is that by the end of May, the building should be up. And John can start to work on the grass and all the nice looking things out there. The horse arena is progressing along. We bought the panels for the fences. We have a prospect of somebody donating the posts to be put in and volunteer work to put it up. They also are expecting to be done with that project end of May to be able to use that this year. We had, was it?
Two weeks ago?
Three weeks ago. We had our annual fundraiser event with the live auction and silent auction, which we brought in close to twenty thousand dollars this year. So over the three years that we've been doing this, this was the best one we've had. And there was a, a lot, a lot of interest and people are extremely excited about the things that are happening out there now that things have started to move along. With that, we've got some, some fun stuff planned for this summer. We're working with State's Attorney Golden on a plan on a few things, tractor pull, car show, things like that. But as they come, we'll let you know about how they're, how that's going to be and we just wanted to let you know that's where everything is.
All right.
So, we have a long ways to go with four more buildings yet, but we got the expense and expensive one taken care of, so.
All right, thanks Chad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess I'll go right on the next one then. I, I mostly have the, the utility improvements on the list because I met with the city of Lennox. As per conversations with some of you commissioners as far as seeing if we could get city sewer out to the site. I met with Nate with the city and, and it looks like there's a possible option of bringing both city water and sewer out to the site. Which, as we had conversations before, the building, the site lacks water for what we're ultimately going to need. And we're trying to figure out how to do it with extra tanks and everything to handle the, the projects. So this would be very attractive to the county, I think, to have the city water and sewer brought out there. So I guess all I want to accomplish today is see if you will point a couple commissioners to meet with the city of Lennox to, I guess, discuss some of these options.
I think that's a great idea, I would, I mean, I, my brain tells me Schmidt and Gibbon would be best to do that. You guys want to do that?
I'll volunteer.
I will too.
Okay.
All right. So moving on to the next one is the, the personal use of a, a vehicle to drive back and forth from work. So as, well, as three of the commissioners would know, when I purchased the vehicle back in nineteen, the option was offered to me of whether I wanted to drive it as my vehicle to work. And at the time, to be honest, I just didn't really see it as a needed benefit to me. And, uh, and quite honestly, up until probably six months ago, would have agreed with that. But I feel like I've reached a tipping point where between having to function at Lennox, having to function sometimes at the T Airport. Sometimes I, I, I start my day out usually here, sometimes I end my day there, then, then what do I do with my car that I have here? My personal vehicle, you know, I've, I've left my personal vehicle here at times. I, I've considered the options of leaving the county pickup at the airport, so it's on county property. But then my, my personal vehicle's sitting at the airport all day and, and I don't know if I like the idea of the county vehicle sitting there because I can't put it inside the, the building there. So I felt like, I, I personally do not need another vehicle sitting in my yard, I've got three children that are also driving, so I, I guess, I, I've just put it out there. That's, I, I realize that I've talked to some of the commissioners and it opens a little bit of a slippery slope with some of the other department heads, but I'm a little unique. You know, I do function more offsite than all the rest of the department heads, I, I would say. But I, I guess, I, it needs a board approval for me to do it and I'll take whatever you guys tell me.
Thoughts, questions?
Do we have criteria from a department head whether they have use of a car? Have we ever had a policy exploration on that?
It's in the handbook.
It's in the handbook?
It is.
For a department head, you're entitled to use a county vehicle, correct?
Would you like to educate us on what that says?
I don't have it pulled up, I just know that it exists within the county policy on county vehicles, though some, I, let me go look it up for you.
It's listed in my agenda briefing form here, if I, I guess I don't know how to pull it up.
I have it up, would you like me to read it?
Yep, go ahead, Sean.
Okay, this is fourteen point one and our employee handbook states the following, personal use benefit of county vehicle. A vehicle use benefit for employees commuting to and from work in a county-owned vehicle will be added to the employee's gross income per federal guidelines. Employees are responsible for paying federal and state taxes on this additional income. Exemptions to the vehicle use income benefit for personal use of county-owned marked and unmarked law enforcement vehicles and vehicles specifically modified for particular job use will be applied per federal guidelines. Eligibility criteria for home use of county vehicles. Only those employees who are subject to callback on a twenty-four hour, seven day per week basis, or as an on-call emergency responder, are eligible to take a county-owned or leased vehicle home for travel to and from work. Violations of this vehicle use policy is grounds for disciplinary action, including termination of employment.
So as you know, I, I get the direct calls when there's a fire alarm here, fire panel problem, I get the direct text messages and calls when there's heating and cooling problems and I do respond, whether it's, and it's twenty-four seven, it's typically at night. And unfortunately typically on the weekends. I've slowly been taken back over those same type calls for the highway shop. And typically we'd call Jared first, call Terry second, call me third. But I, I do believe it's a building function to deal with any kind of a fire panel problem out there, more than a highway shop person. So that's, I've been stepping in more, doing more of those type calls. And of course then, snow removal.
I don't, I, I don't know, John, I think you have a strong case because you've got responsibilities that are twenty-four seven. If something happens at the courthouse in your home at night, you have to drive down here. And we're also asking you to go to the four-H. And that's on the other side of the county and we're also asking you to go to the airport, so you've got a lot of traveling going on here. So if anybody needed a vehicle, you'd probably be one that would use it the most outside of our highway superintendent.
So obviously, John, there's a policy which you've read to us and you adhere to that policy or you meet that requirement. So are you just looking for a verbal or a mo, actual motion to say, yes, it's authorized for you to use that vehicle to go home?
It requires the commission to approve it.
And then you'd have to work with Julia and all the other?
Julia R. Sherry on how it, how I get. So basically, the mileage will be charged back to a benefit to me and I will have to pay the taxes on that.
Madam Chair, I'd authorize the use of that vehicle under our guidelines for superintendent.
Got a motion and a second, and this is only your vehicle, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
So, so we would service it and pay the gas just like a sheriff's department's vehicle, or what?
Well, it's our vehicle.
It's our vehicle.
Correct, that's.
We already do.
As much as I could, I would always, it would be primarily for my use. I'm not saying if one of the other pickups is broke down, I wouldn't have to dedicate that vehicle to, to John or Tom to use, I, it's, you know. I think, I think in those instances, I just wouldn't claim the mileage on that type of use, you know.
We also had precedent once we had a person that worked for the highway department that lived at Lennox and had use of a pickup to drive back and forth all the time, so. Mr. Jacobson was his name.
Madam Chair, call the question, please.
You have a motion and a second, Sean, will you call?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
I'm in abstain. All right, we are going to move on to Sean, item twelve.
Hello, good afternoon, I guess. In February, this board authorized notice to airport consultants requesting statements of qualification for a project in our zero-two-zero twenty-twenty-two AIP grant. Now is the time to choose one of the three that submitted qualifications. They are the American Engineering Testing, Inc., Braun Intertech, and Soil Technologies, Inc. I have included their statements of qualifications attached to this agenda, as well as a blank rating sheet if you so choose to use that. However, selection is supposed to be based on the following criteria. Capability to perform all sampling and testing of aspects of the apron reconstruction project, that's to be thirty percent. Knowledge of FAA standards, policies and procedures is an additional thirty percent. Recent experience with comparable projects at similarly sized airports is ten percent. And history of meeting schedules and staying within budget, twenty percent. And five, understanding of the project's potential challenges and sponsors' concerns.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Unless I get a stern look from somebody, I'm going to motion to table this until our next meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Commissioner Schmidt, item fourteen.
We've had considerable interest on a carbon pipeline that runs the length of our county and this morning I put this on the agenda. Because if we are going to have a comment from our county commission, we have to apply to the PUC. For a party status, a party withstanding, so that we're able to level our comments to them. This, there is an application process and I'm asking for a motion on the part of the commission to apply for this party of status or a party withstanding. So that we're able to listen to the individuals that have many comments and we're able to articulate a proposal or a statement that we wish to make to the PUC. Joy, do you have any comments that you want to make? I think there's been a lot of misunderstanding as to what, why this is. This is just the first step, but it allows us to have a voice and a comment to them. Do you have any further comments?
Yes, this is Joy Hone. And yesterday mid-morning, I'd like to tell you I received an urgent call from a very agitated landowner that lives a couple miles south of us. He was very upset that there was a survey crew on his land without. He was very upset that there was a survey crew on his land without any permission from him and any legal notification from Summit. From past experience, I'm here to tell you, that is how these companies operate. They walk all over landowners and we need protection, we need this protection from you. Uh, we need you to consider the safety and welfare of the citizens and landowners of Lincoln County in addition to the liability that is put on landowners. Landowners cannot obtain liability insurance with this type of pipeline coming through their land. So we're asking you to show your concern and position with this pipeline because we know that there is more to come. PUC Commissioner Gary Hanson said that they need to know where the county stands. Please consider applying for party status by this Friday, April eighth. It's just reserving a seat at the table. Since there is so much unknown about this project and the regulations that they fall under, it is critical to keep legal standing in the case in order to ensure that the county will have a voice in the process if they so desire. You will not have the opportunity to express the county's concerns or opinion after the party status deadline of this Friday, April eighth. You have the responsibility to protect us, to protect the citizens and landowners of Lincoln County, not to summit and not to put billions of dollars in their pockets at the cost of our lives and our land. And I'd like to thank you for also putting it on next week's agenda.
Thank you. So I'm proposing, uh, two things. One, as Joy said, we have a public meeting on next week's agenda to address this issue. But more importantly today, I would, I move for a resolution to apply for a party status or party withstanding to the PUC. Signed by our chairman person.
You used the language resolution, I'm gonna call it an application, um, because that appears to be what it is. It's an application for party status, I don't know if everybody's got a chance to look at it, can pass it around.
Well, all it is is an application.
It's pretty simple, yeah, it's pretty simple. So we've heard the request, um.
Does this require state's attorney resources to be dedicated to responding to every filing that's made in response to us intervening as a party?
I don't think that's been determined at this point in time.
Have you read this?
Yes.
Every, every county, I think, uh, from throughout Iowa throughout, and, and South Dakota, Minnehaha has, Brown has, McPherson has, every pipeline that it touches has applied for this. We're the only one, in my understanding, is that has not applied to the PUC at this time.
I know it was on Turner's County's calendar as well today, but to your question, it depends on the position and what the commission is doing.
Yeah, I mean, I keep hearing people say that this just means we get the notices and everything, but the notices are all published on the internet, you can just look them up. You don't have to intervene in order to receive notices from the PUC. But my concern is, we, we've got serious criminal law issues that need to be taken care of in this county and I don't wanna see scarce law enforcement resources dedicated within the state's attorney's office to having to be intervening in a case where you've got all these other counties now that are intervening, they can take care of it.
Your points are well-taken, Commissioner Ehrens. So the way I'm reading this, to be entitled to intervene, um, you need, it says one must supply the facts provided in the application for party status to the law in precedent. So I think right now it's just submitting an application that gives us the ability to do that. Is that fair? It's not making the decision to intervene, it's just putting us on the list that we can possibly, if we want to.
It is the first step to become a party intervener. You have to show within statutes that you have a, you have a right to intervene and then to participate. So yes, it's the first step in the process and that's why I'm saying, how much is dedicated, how much is actually what the commission position is, hasn't been determined. This is just an application to get intervention. And then you can participate, it can, you can do a little or you can do a lot.
We don't ever have to intervene if we don't want to, correct? I mean, this doesn't obligate us.
We could give notice and we could always.
It just allows you the right, I mean, you have to register in order to have that status.
Yes, April eighth is the final deadline.
Madam Chair, for the record, I will need to abstain, uh, from any voter discussion on this topic.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a motion on the floor, would you have a second?
You do, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, any further discussion? If not, Sean, you call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens.
No.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Poppins abstains, Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
I don't know if it matters, um, yes. What was the vote on that, done, Sean?
Uh, that is three yays, one abstained, and one nay.
All right. Moving on, we are on item fifteen and this is on our agenda as a ballot dropbox, box policy. Do we have a dropbox policy? I didn't see one in the share drive.
I don't think we do.
Okay, so Sherry, do you wanna come up and address, tell us about the dropbox? So that everybody's on the same page, knows what we're talking about.
Okay, so the history of the dropbox is, um, after mass media attention set fear in the voters that their ballot would not be safely delivered or processed through the post office. Um, and also during the pandemic of twenty-twenty, the commissioners had shut down the courthouse, um, except for by appointment. People needed a secure delivery method to get their ballots to the auditor's office. This was a safe, contactless option. There was no fraudulent activity due to the ballot dropbox. Every ballot in the box had an absentee ballot application already in the office, that's every ballot. Um, from the time the box was installed, it was under twenty-four-hour surveillance. The box was checked first thing in the morning. Had there been any activity, um, suspicious activity that happened, we would have been able to view the footage from the night before. People were pleased that they had this option, I know this, because it was used. Um, why did I choose to move the dropbox now? We didn't have handicap accessible doors at the sheriff's entrance when we purchased the dropbox. So it's been moved there for more security. Um, and we're improving security on all facets of the election, this is the only noticeable one. Um, thousands of people took advantage of the dropbox. They also took advantage of the sheriff's deputy that we had in Sioux Falls in order to make sure that their ballots were being processed correctly. Um, none of our office procedures for validating the absentee ballots changed during the time. We, even with the overwhelming number of absentee ballots that we received. During the canvassing of the twenty-twenty general election, there were compliments from the board, as well as the public, regarding the handling and the options for these dropbox and drop sites. There was no fraudulent activity proven to be had, so I don't see at this point any reason to remove them.
All right, um, I have a question for legal counsel. My understanding of elections and the auditor's office is she's a constitutional officer elected, that we don't have any direct control or management of her office, is that a fair statement?
I can overcomplicate things, but yes, so.
In other words, we don't get to tell Sherry what to do?
Secretary of State runs the elections, the election board runs and sets the rules. It's set out in statute what everybody has to follow and rules. The commission role in most elect, or the commission's role is to go ahead and do the canvassing, which you've done in the past. But the operations of local elections is left to the auditor, so.
Do we have control over our buildings and grounds?
To some extent.
And so if there's a dropbox, which is not a ballot box, under the definition provided in, under statute, we have authority on, the commission has authority on where to place that, correct? Since it does not constitute an official ballot box?
No, I believe it falls under an extension of the auditor's office to receive absentee ballots. So it would be, I would consider it to be a part of her office in receiving the ballots.
How many other counties have this, if anyone knows? Do, do you know, Sherry?
The counties that I've dealt with in the southeast district, um, especially during the pandemic, all of them had dropboxes because most of the county offices were closed.
So I anticipated that response with regard to the dropbox as an extension of a ballot box. And here's my understanding of, of that issue is, under SDCL twelve dash nineteen dash seven, that is marking and folding ballot. Here's what that statute says. A voter voting an absentee ballot shall mark it and fold it without revealing the marks to any other person. The voter shall place the voted ballots in the return envelope provided and seal the envelope. The voter shall sign the statement on the return envelope. The voter shall either mail the ballot, deliver it in person, or have it delivered to the person in charge of the election. And my point is, the statute does not allow the authority for a dropbox to be considered an extension of the auditor's office, because it's not specifically provided for in state law, number one. Because we are commanded to accept ballots to the person in charge of the election. Now, when an individual drops a ballot into a dropbox, they are surrendering an absentee ballot we're talking about here. They're surrendering that ballot to a object which they're not authorized to under law because the statute specifically says you gotta deliver it to the person in charge of the election, not an inanimate object, uh, that is a vis a vis an extension. And also, dropboxes have not been enabled or authorized by the Secretary of State or, more importantly, by the legislature. And so I'm concerned that the auditor is usurping power from the legislature by creating a device or a method for voting, uh, or receiving, serving as a receptacle of a ballot.
Then if you want a ballot box, Paul, I'm going to stop you because this is getting partisan and political.
Why am I being interrupted when I'm making a point?
Because this is a limited forum and there's limits even for commissioners.
Well, I think as a matter of civility, it's important to allow people to just finish making their point.
We are overstepping.
Wasn't that the discussion that we're trying to have?
I think you should come to us with a policy, discuss it with legal counsel, discuss it with the auditor before sitting up here and giving everybody a bunch of rhetoric for your political pundits.
Well, the, I, I'm sorry that you wanna challenge my motives. My only motive for being here is to comply with the law.
And you're out of order. If you wanna discuss this and bring a actual policy forward that's been vetted by legal counsel and our auditor and the Secretary of State, please do so.
I don't want a policy, I want the box removed. Because there is no policy, because you can't comply with something that's inherently illegal.
Then discuss it with legal counsel.
But as a commissioner, I have no requirement to discuss with legal counsel before putting an issue on the agenda for discussion.
And the issue is on the agenda? I think you're overstepping. I don't think you can, I don't think we control the auditor's office and how she runs her elections. You certainly can disagree with that, but I'd like you to talk to legal counsel about it. And maybe it's a topic better left for executive session.
Well, I'm making a motion to have the ballot bo, to have the dropbox removed.
There's been a motion, is there a second? Motion fails. Okay, we're moving on to Carla Guessen. This is not a public hearing, this is not a public hearing. I am not saying that, this is not a public hearing. I don't know who told you, I don't know who told you this would be a public hearing, it is not. They were advertised public hearings that are required to be a public hearing. It is not a public hearing.
How do we do that then?
I am not here to give you advice. That's not true at all. I'm gonna call the meeting back to order, if anybody speaks out, they're gonna be asked to leave. We're on item sixteen of our agenda.
Excuse me, sir, you have my phone number? You can.
Call it and you won't fucking answer.
Excuse, you, excuse me, sir, please give me your number so I can call you now, if you say you've called me, thank you.
Go ahead, Carla.
Good afternoon, in accordance to South Dakota Codify Law ten-three dash fourteen, it's an annual conference with the County Commission and the Director of Equalization. Um, it's held in the office of the County Commission, which is these chambers. I'm here to discuss, uh, duties and responsibilities of the Director of Equalization. I have put forward in your agenda packet some information that we have, um, discussed in previous years. Um, I've held true to these, to the same type of format. Last week, we had a workshop in, with, in regards to the Assessor's Office, the appeals process and the overall assessments for twenty-twenty-two. Um, that has been part of the discussion that we have, um, dealt with during this discussion. I wanted to, since we discussed that last week, I wanted to bring forth, um, some information that we did not discuss. And that was, uh, the growth that, uh, the Equalization Office has, um, over the last couple of years incurred. If you look at our twenty-one information sheet, you can see our property transfers have increased thirty percent from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one. And from twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two, we continually see a seventeen percent increase. It's no surprise to anybody. You've heard all day long today that, you know, the growth, growth, growth in Lincoln County. Um, the growth is happening in many parts of the county. Um, as for building permits, property transfers, platting, um, just about everything. Um, so this comes, like I said, this comes as no surprise to you. Uh, some of the information that I wanna highlight again, um, other than the growth, which we all are aware of, is assessments and where assessments lie in relevance to, um, the sales price um, of properties that are being sold. Our agricultural properties, uh, for the twenty-twenty through, November first twenty-twenty year through October thirty-first twenty-twenty-one, our egg transfers resulted in about a thirty-six percent assessment to sell price ratio. Keep in mind, our agricultural properties are being valued on the productivity system and not a market approach to valuation. So having a low ratio is of no surprise statewide. It's not a, it's not a market valuation system, it's productivity. Um, our non-egg transfers, which we had, um, a few, uh, one thousand four hundred ninety-nine transfers for the twenty, uh, twenty-one assessment year, uh, reflective for our twenty-twenty-two values. reflective for our 2022 values. We were coming up with a median assessment ratio of 78.92. So we are at 78.92% of the assessed value to sale price percentages. By law, we are to be between 85 and 100%. I have strongly encouraged Lincoln County Commission staff to be right around 92%. We fell short this year, we came in at about 90%. I think overall was flat rate of 90%. Previous year in 2020, we were at 90.82 after all of our changes. And some of the most dramatic changes that took place for the 2022 assessment year was our land valuation that took place in the rural parts of the county. Our price per acre increased, and how we looked at our remaining acres. We started with a base of two acres, and then we had a tiered system, 3 to 10 acres was another pricing range, and then we tiered it off again, our 10 to 20 acres was another tier. As we were in the northern part of the county, the prices are dramatically higher, and this was all sales-driven when we came up with the valuation system. I think we covered that pretty, pretty much last week. I can go over it again if you want.
Carla, didn't you also say that the state reassessed pasture lands for farmers as well, that it hadn't been increased for years? And I know that that affected a number in the agricultural sector as well.
That might be a two-part question. I don't know if it's being intertwined with something, but our agricultural land gets reevaluated every year, our crop top dollar changes based on the Olympic averages and the productivity scale that's set in law, and also our grass rating as well. I think what you're leading into is we had a reclassification of all of our agricultural properties in Lincoln County, because the law changes and changed, and it went into effect July 1 of 2021. So we reached out to all of our properties under 40 acres, because that's our minimum requirement for agricultural land in Lincoln County. We had them reclassified to see if they still qualified for the agricultural classification. The first and primary criteria that you must meet to be eligible for agricultural land is it has to be agricultural productive, meaning you have to be doing something agricultural on the land. The second and third criteria, you have to meet one of the other two, is acre requirements, which is Lincoln County is 40 acres, or an income. The state has set forth an income guideline in the last three or five years, you have to have at least $2,500 of agricultural income coming from the land. So we made everyone re-qualify that was under 40 acres. That's, that, I think roughly about 175 people were no longer qualifying for agricultural because of that reclassification that we sent out. So some good news, just to keep moving along, I know it's been a long day for you. Our reappraisal is scheduled to be on the last, final phase for Lincoln County. In 2022, we are going into Hudson in Beersford, and then also the townships of nine, the bottom tier of 96, so it'd be Eden, Norway, Pleasant, and Brooklyn. We will be doing the reappraisal in those areas this year for the 2023 assessment year, and then we have completely gone full circle in the countywide reappraisal. This summer, we will, staff and I, and maybe the help with some of the commission, will look at what the next phase of the reappraisal cycle may look like, door-to-door, questionnaires, you know, what, what do we, what did we learn, what did we do right, what did we do wrong, what do we need to change? So that's something that we'd probably be discussing for 2023. But good news is, we've been through a complete reappraisal of Lincoln County. We'll, the folks, the appraisal staff will be out in the field sometime this April, and we'll get it done for the 23 assessment year.
Anybody have any questions for Carla?
Carla, do you have the number of appeals that we're facing?
Yep. So this time also, we look at the appeals that are up and coming. We had a brief discussion in regarding to scheduling and what, what was going to be on the docket. This is what Donna Eckley has put together so far for the commission. As of, by the time I came down here this morning, we were looking at 101 appeals that were coming to the commission. The deadline is today, so they have until 11:59 to file an appeal to the County Board of Equalization. We have four owner, four owner occupied appeals coming forth to you. Consolidated, which is with the city of Canton, we have about 10. We have six appeals that have missed the deadline or did not go to the local Board of Equalization, or both. This is what we have slated for you so far. On Tuesday, the morning and afternoon session will be hearing those appeals in our rural sector, so our townships. In the evening, we will look at our Sioux Falls, be hearing our Sioux Falls appeals. On Wednesday afternoon, small towns and our commercial appeals will be heard, and then Wednesday evening consolidated. Now, that would fulfill what we have for the 101 appeals that we have so far, but not knowing what we will encounter in the next 12 hours. What I would like the board to decide is, our overflow would be on Thursday. If you would pick in order which sessions we would be using for our overflow. We do have some more time here in consolidated. In the evening, you would probably break as consolidated and reconvene as County Board of Equalization. We have a few slots available there, we'll fill that up first, since you're already here. But if you were to choose session 1, 2, and 3, can the board come to a consensus on which, which would come first? If we were to have an overflow, or if you would like me to choose, I can do that as well. We have a four-person board in the evening.
I think the evening makes the most sense.
Okay. That would have been my first choice. Yep. We will also be hearing the owner occupied appeals, tax exempts, administrative-type changes, meaning property owners have, the properties have been inspected by an appraiser. We've come up with a recommendation, and the property owner is in agreeance of it. We'll be hearing those type of appeals, starting at 10:00 a.m. on the 12th of April. So next Tuesday, we'll start the Boards of Equalization. Right now, it looks like about two hours.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Carla, I might be able to come more than I'm signed up for, so I'll, I'll show up if I sure can.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all it is.
All right, consider our motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Also moved.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Sean, will you call the roll?
Who was the?
I think I had Ehrens.
Ehrens and somebody over there.
I'll take the second then.
Okay.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?